We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission Meeting. We ask that you turn off or silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM and also at midnight. Also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
First order of business, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from February fourteen, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Do I have any questions or comments? If not, I'll enter.
I move that we accept the minutes as recorded.
A second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, new business, public comments. Public comments is limited to two to three minutes. And we ask that, that when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address. No action will be taken by the commission. Ms. Air, do we have anyone that signed up?
Two people signed up tonight. First, we have Gail Kemper.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Gail.
I feel like I'm on a game show. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to participate. This is my first time, so I'm like, uh, my three minutes, okay. I do not receive the Leavenworth Times. My mother does, who is ninety-five at this moment, lives on her own at home, she's not going to it. And she told me about the trash bins. Are we no longer going to be able to put trash bags out? Are there going to be exceptions to, like, I have health issues. She's ninety-five, so I'm wondering, you know, because it would be physically impossible for her to drag from her garage to the front where they pick up the trash. And for me to come from the back alley up around to the front to, you know. So I was just wondering, I don't know what has been discussed. Like I said, this is my first time being here. And I was wondering, you know, are there exceptions? Are there, do we fill out a paper? And I thank you so much for your time. I just wanted to, you know, like, get my two cents.
No, you're good before you go.
I can answer your question for you. If you so choose, absolutely nothing will change. You can still use bags. You don't have to use the polycarts. You can opt out. And even if you opt in and get a polycart, you don't have to use it. If, if, if it's easier for you to use bags and continue to carry them out, you may continue to do so. There's nothing that prevents that.
Yeah, because there, I mean, it's just, it's a limitation, you know, for, you know, like, a younger senior citizen.
Sure.
I got your back.
Thank you so very much, and I'm like, woo-hoo.
Yeah, thank you for your time, ma'am, appreciate you.
And then next, we have Public Information Officer Melissa Bauer.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. Volunteers are needed for the Leavenworth Citywide Spring Cleanup Saturday, April twenty-second. This event brings together hundreds of volunteers to pick up trash throughout the city of Leavenworth. Volunteers who sign up by April fifth will receive a free T-shirt. All volunteers will get a one-day pool pass to Womack Aquatic Center. We expect to have many scout groups, churches, nonprofit organizations, businesses, civic groups, and school groups aid us in our quest to remove as much trash as possible from the city streets in one day. Picking up trash helps us keep our city clean, prevents trash from washing into our creeks and streams, and also helps the city of Leavenworth in meeting its KDHE stormwater reporting requirements. The spring cleanup provides our youngest, oldest, and everyone in between a chance to give back to their community. So we hope to get a lot of volunteers this year. There's a sign-up sheet online, or our teams can contact me at melissab at firstcity.org. That's my email address, or my phone number, which is nine one three six eight zero twenty-six ten. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Melissa, will this be on the city website?
Absolutely. If you look on our website, on the homepage, there's a little map cut out that talks about the spring cleanup. And you can click on that link, and it'll give you more information.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Those the only two, Ms. Air?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's appointment. I move to appoint to the First Judicial District Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, Vicky Cause, to an unexpired term ending February fourteen, twenty twenty-four. I also move to appoint to the Leavenworth County Port Authority, Dave Schroeder, to a term ending March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-seven. And I also move to appoint to the Conventions and Tourism Committee, Gerald West III, to an unexpired term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This requires a second.
Second.
All right, motion has been seconded. I begin voting with Commissioner Lee Anhardt.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, consider cereal malt beverage license for Shop Smart Number Two, seven hundred Eisenhower Road.
Sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a request to issue an off-premise twenty-twenty-three cereal malt beverage license for Shop Smart. It is located kind of at the corner, cat diagonal from Dylan's. It is one of our stragglers from the renewal season. They just kind of forgot to throw this one in. So they have their current health permit with the city, and it has been approved by the police department. So tonight, we're just requesting approval of their beverage, uh, cereal malt beverage license for the year.
Yep, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Diagonal from Dylan's?
Yeah, the little.
The corner of Shrine Park and Eisenhower.
Yeah, that gas station.
The gas station.
Oh, the gas, okay, it's on the same big lot.
Yeah, yeah. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the issuance of the twenty-twenty-three off-premise consumption cereal malt beverage license for Shop Smart Number Two at seven hundred Eisenhower Road. A second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, Resolutions B twenty-three twenty-eight, Annual Report for Stormwater Twenty Twenty-Two.
Mr. Brian Faust, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the annual KDHE report for the twenty-twenty-two stormwater activities. The city is required to submit an annual report to KDHE that summarizes actions the city has taken the previous year to protect and enhance stormwater quality. The draft report was reviewed by the commission on February fourteenth and is available on the city's website. No input or concerns were received from residents regarding the report. However, yesterday, Matt from the library did email the city and let us know that they would be happy to provide and share information regarding stormwater with the public, including serving as a distribution point for any materials that we may have. And so that really goes a long ways on one of our minimum control measures for public education. The final report does include statements from the city that the city has reduced pollution in accordance with the requirements to the maximum extent practical. Staff's opinion is the city has met the intent of the regulations to reduce pollution through the six minimum control measures as described in the report. There is considerable additional information in the appendices that are included with the report when submitted. The report is due tomorrow, and we recommend the city commission adopt Resolution B twenty-three twenty-eight supporting the final report. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Do we have any questions or comments?
Not here.
If not.
Mr. Mayor, I, hey, sorry.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Resolution B twenty-three twenty-eight supporting the final report.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Lee Anhardt.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, consider award bids for property maintenance services.
Julie Hurley, the Director of Community Planning and Development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the mission. This is our, these are our contracts for our mowing services that we do annually for some city-owned properties as well as code enforcement properties. We put out a bid for, to receive bids on the clusters of our city-owned properties as well as, again, the property maintenance that we do for the code enforcement. We received a total of four proposals as of the due date on February twenty-first. The low bids were as follows. We have five clusters for the city-owned properties. For Cluster One, the low bid was ground effects lawn and landscaping for a total of one thousand five hundred ninety-five per mowing, not to exceed twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Cluster Two is Wilkins Lawn Care, total of nine hundred and fifty per mowing, not to exceed thirteen thousand three hundred dollars for the season. Cluster Three is Mayor's Lawn and Landscape for three hundred and seventy-five per mowing, not to exceed five thousand two hundred and fifty for the season. Cluster Four is Ground Effects Lawn and Landscape for three hundred and eighty-nine dollars per mowing, not to exceed five thousand four hundred and forty-six for the season. Cluster Five is also Ground Effects Lawn and Landscape for three hundred and thirty-five per mowing, not to exceed four thousand six hundred and ninety. The total on that was fifty-one thousand sixteen dollars. We do mow our city properties every other week. And so that's all outlined in the contract. We have a total of fourteen mowings for the year that will be covered with these contracts. And then the property maintenance, the low bid was affordable lawn care at a cost of two cents per square foot. And these we do on an as-needed basis. We don't necessarily put out a contract for code enforcement mowing every week. It just kind of depends on how many properties we have that need to be mowed. So this contract will be issued for a period of two years with the option to renew for an additional two years. So staff would recommend the acceptance of the proposals for mowing services for the selected contractors as outlined in the policy report. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Thank you. It's good to see the prices went down.
The prices went down, and also, if you remember, we were really in a crisis last year finding contractors.
Yeah.
And so I'm happy for that industry or that, that line of work that they've maybe found some stability. So it was good to see, and it was nice that we could award everybody who put in a bid with at least one cluster.
That's good.
Spread, spread it out a little bit, so happy with that.
Yeah, appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments?
No, looks good to me.
Yeah, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the proposals for the mowing services for the selected contractors. Ground FX, Lawn and Landscape for Perpetual Lawn Care, not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six. Wilkins Lawn Care for Perpetual Lawn Care, not to exceed thirteen thousand three hundred. Mayor's Lawn and Landscaping for Perpet, Perpetual Lawn Care, not to exceed five thousand two hundred and fifty. And Affordable Lawn Care for Property Maintenance at a cost of two cents per shift.
Square foot.
Square foot, sorry.
Square foot.
I can't read.
It's a little.
Thank you.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Lee Anhardt.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Consider Award of Design Services Contract for Sanitary Sewer Flow Monitoring and Analysis Project.
Once again, Brian Faust will handle this item.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider a contract with George Butler Associates, or GBA, as a twenty-twenty-three sanitary sewer flow monitoring, monitoring and analysis project, excuse me. The city of Leavenworth has been concerned with the amount of inflow and infiltration that enters the wastewater system. And reduction of the INI was identified as an important issue in recent master plans. The photo up on the screen shows kind of the difference between infiltration and inflow. I've been doing this for thirty years, so it's obvious to me that you guys are fairly new. Infiltration is, refers to groundwater that slowly seeps into the sewer system through holes, cracks, failed joints, and faulty service taps. Inflow is stormwater that quickly enters the sanitary sewer system from downspouts, foundation, foundation drains, and by direct connection to storm sewers. These types of connections are not permitted, but have frequently occurred in the past. The twenty-ten wastewater master plan update confirmed that the city should focus on INI reduction in the three-mile creek watershed in the northeast area of the city. GBA did perform flow monitoring in twenty-twelve to identify locations in need of repair. Since then, the city has completed several sanitary sewer INI projects to help achieve this reduction in INI. These projects include both the lining of existing pipe, which we awarded this year, and full-scale replacement of pipes and manhole. Westland Construction is doing that right now. Prior to additional work in this watershed, staff feels it's prudent to reevaluate this portion of the watershed to see if what we're doing has made an impact on the amount of INI that's actually coming into our system. This year, we're going to spend about, excuse me, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We want to make sure that what we're doing is actually producing the results that we need it to do. This project will use three temporary flow monitors for a period of ninety days with an option to extend for another thirty if needed. These monitors will help locate, excuse me, these monitors will be located to help determine what level of improvement the city has accomplished since twenty-twelve. The deliverable for this project will be a final report that summarizes the data collected, the flow parameters analyzed, the areas where excessive INI is occurring, and the impact of our previous projects. A cost to reduction will be evaluated to determine effectiveness of the repair methods and if other repair methods would be more effective. Also, from the report will be recommendations for the future direction of the INI program. The cost will be funded from the sanitary sewer INI funds set aside for this type of work in a not-to-exceed amount of eighty-six thousand ninety-six dollars. This includes seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six for the initial ninety-day period. If an additional thirty days is needed to capture more rain events, the total cost would be eighty-six ninety-six. It is best to put the monitors in place now, prior to the spring rains. You want to capture those rain events. If we have a normal spring, we would not need to do the additional thirty days monitor. The city has been using GBA for professional services related to sanitary sewer projects for the past several years. They completed the flow monitoring in twenty-twelve and have significant experience here in Kansas. Staff does recommend approval of the Design Services Contract with George Butler Associates for the sanitary sewer flow monitoring in an amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand ninety-six dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No.
Just one question. Do we know, I mean, maybe ballpark of what we spent to try to fix some of this, you know, issue over the last ten, eleven years or so? Just to kind of know if our impacts have made a difference once we find out.
Well, I mean, in twenty-twenty-two, we awarded a contract to Westland for seven hundred and forty-nine thousand and a forty-six thousand dollar contract to line sanitary sewer pipes. So you're talking a little over eight hundred thousand in that ballpark. I think in twenty-twenty, we, we delayed some projects due to uncertainty with COVID-nineteen impacts. But my understanding is probably that we were doing projects every year.
Yeah, so we absolutely have that number, and I can get you the exact number. We started, I think, in about two thousand fourteen or fifteen with the basin work, and it was designed at five hundred thousand a year. That's the, the part of the sanitary sewer budget that's set aside for INI. And how we're able to do seven fifty is if we don't finish the twenty-twenty-one program in a year, then it carries over to twenty-two. So you, you would, you would assume three and a half million, seven years at a half million a year, but we'll get you the exact numbers. We do, we do cash of that as a separate line item in the sanitary sewer budget.
Cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
And one thing I would add, this is in one sub watershed of a bigger watershed. I mean, for five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
You don't do a lot of, we did eighteen hundred feet of pipe this year. And that project was seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. It works out to four hundred and seventeen dollars a foot. Yeah.
Most of it's, this year, we did, we do right south of Sagasu. There on Seventh Street, it was at the project. So it's right next to buildings. It's usually really deep, and it's usually full, full pipe replacement. We can, we can line in a few places, but these are often hundred-year-old stormwater sanitary sewer pipes that were.
It's, it's expensive for not a lot of money.
Sure. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I'll entertain a motion, there's no other comments.
Sir, I move to approve the Design Services Contract with George Butler Associates, Inc. for the sanitary sewer flow monitoring project in the amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand ninety-six dollars.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Lee Anhardt.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda. Move to approve claims for February eleventh, two thousand twenty-three through February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one million thirty-three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Net amount for payroll number four, effective February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. Includes police and fire pension in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Before we move into the executive session, wanted to go around the table to see if anyone wanted to provide any updates or comments, starting with Paul.
Few, if you don't mind. We've successfully filled all the slots for the Three Mile Creek Cleanup Program. So that's a great program. Every year, we have nonprofit groups who clean Three Mile Creek, and we make them take pictures. We inspect it afterwards before payment, and so that's a real good way to get a five hundred dollar donation, donation to area nonprofits.
It's cool.
For the, for, that's once a month that we do that program. We already advertising for lifeguards. We, we've done really well. We have a very good staff out there and a good pool manager. So we're really fortunate to have some good relationships with area lifeguards, but we're still recruiting for lifeguards. That starts now. I wanted to make a note, I was emailing with the commissioner a little bit with Commissioner Martin about some water, the water issues, in, in case anybody has smelled or tasted a little bit of foul odor. And it, we dug a little bit deeper. And that's from about ten days ago. There was heavy rainfall north of us that flushed a lot of organic and tins of material into the river. Usually happens later in the spring, but it does usually happen each year. The Water Department is on it. They, they have to change their treatment methods a little bit to account for that organic material. They do that by adding granular carbon to the water. The water is tested and safe, but it does make, create a smell or a taste difference. So they started adding that late last week, and the water should return to normal about the middle of this week as they, as they sort of balance the, the chemicals and the treatment of, of the drinking water, so.
Thanks for checking into that.
Yeah, it was, I, I knew that there was a spring term, but I, it was, it was interesting to learn more about the process they go to to counteract those, those natural occurrences in the spring, so in case anybody's wondering. And then just finally, tonight, we appointed David Schrader, who's the President and CEO of Great Western Manufacturing, to the Leavenworth County Port Authority Board as the city's representative. But the outgoing is Rick Snyder, Exchange Bank and Trust Market President. Rick came on when the port authority was changed to a seven-member board, when they changed sort of the organizing structure. And so I just wanted to publicly thank Rick for his service. That was kind of a turbulent time, everybody trying to figure out what the new port, port authority looked at. We asked him to do it. Rick's been involved in a lot of stuff over the community over the years, and he reluctantly said yes. But then he did a great job representing the city's interests on the Port Authority Board for the last couple of years. So thank him for his service, and certainly looking forward to Dave Schrader, a great local business owner and President and CEO stepping in on behalf of the city for that port, so.
Yes.
Just wanted to say that. That's all I have.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Okay, no, I don't have anything. Have a great rest of the week, and I'll see you in March. Yeah.
I had the opportunity this past weekend to go and, and see something put on the Parks and Recreation, which a lot of people think of swimming pools and, you know, the gymnasiums and, and ball fields and such. But they also do live theater. They operate, or they oversee the River City Community Players. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to go and see their current production curtains. Funny musical. It really is a funny musical. I was, I was really, really entertained. I had a great time. It was great fun. Live music for a musical that they haven't had since something like twenty-fourteen. So, but they had live music, live music. It was a ten-piece orchestra there. And it really was real community theater, lots of folks in there. So I would highly recommend you go and see it. It's just running this weekend, Friday and Saturday at seven-thirty, and then Sunday, I believe it's at two. But you can check. But, yeah, it'd be a matinee. And, I mean, just a lot of fun, a lot of fun to go and see it.
Thank you.
And have a good week.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just encourage everybody and your family members to, to go out and really, if you've never done it, take a look at our, our trail system. I love how it's developing more and more, and it's, we've got some really pretty areas around the city that kind of stay hidden sometimes. So anyway, encourage you to do that and help us.
Good point. Well, I was glad to see that there was some legislation that was, that did not pass this time. Every few years, we get that they try to make our local elections partisan. And one of the, the biggest issues that we have against that is that we have so many military and government employees that cannot serve. And if you look at over the years, how many of our government employees have served on our school boards and our city commissions and, and as mayor and as other things? And so because of the Hatch Act, which is a federal act that says federal employees cannot serve on partisan, cannot participate in partisan elections, we are opposed to that. And every few years, it comes up. It came up a few years ago, and I'm glad that it failed this time, but I, I don't know why that, that keeps coming up. But we need to, you know, it's a big part of our community. We need to make sure that everybody that can, can run for public office here, so. Anyway, I'm glad that that happened. That's all I need to say, and have a great week.
Yep, and echoing Commissioner Bauer, I think it's important that we do remain nonpartisan when it comes to our local government. You know, making sure that we find the right individuals that's going to serve the community as a whole instead of just a party. And so I want to say thank you all, God bless. And so I want to say thank you all. God bless you and appreciate you at this time. We will move into our executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for a period of.
Twenty-five minutes to return at six-fifty-five?
Twenty-five minutes to return at six-fifty-five. For the purpose of discussing a real property matter with the city attorney under justification for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. The city commission, city manager and city attorney will be present. The open meeting will resume in the city commission chambers at six-fifty-five P M.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhart.
Aye.
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 Our motion carried. We're in executive session. All right. Motion carried. We're in executive session. If there's no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Go.
Sorry. Yep, second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Five zero, meeting adjourned.
I still got time to go.